Welcome everyone. To Town Hall number 111, it's a lucky number. And as everybody knows, we have our community lead Peter traveling around Europe. I'm gonna be jumping today and we'll be taking turns for this challenge of facilitating the ambassador town halls. We are here with Lord Kissy, Rojo, Tivo, Vanessa and her alter ego. We have Manuel, Pagnabas, Coli, O E P. We have our note taker, William Tatz and William McCarter. Happy to share this moment with you guys. Sharing my screen, I'm gonna share now next slide on this. And it's the agenda for today. So we're gonna start with R and D Guild. New operation system updated, so Kissy is gonna go for that one. Then we're gonna have a, Vani is gonna be jumping in with Q3 and reports and Q4 budget deadline upcoming on the next week. That one is mixed, open topics, that one is gonna be the last one. And then we're gonna have a special moment and we are very happy to have back Rojo in the room. Presenting and showcasing the deliverables from the R and D proposal for Web3 contribution dashboard for the ambassador program. He did present this functional artifact last Wednesday in our weekly meeting. And we are really happy to share the results of the allocation of resources. And happy to have you back here in the room as well. So not that one, let's gonna start with Kissy, so I'm gonna mute my mic and Kissy, you wanna give an update on what we have been working for the last month? And where we are and the announcements we have ready for today? Go for it.
Alright, good everyone. So in the R and D Guild, we presented in the last few calls, the new operation system. And now this is the new proposal templates that we've worked on. So now we plan on opening applications for proposals on the just a minute, let me just clarify the dates. So we plan on opening applications for community proposals. On the, sorry, just a minute. Alright.
Yeah, don't worry for the date, Kissy, as it is on the slide for the introduction of the topic. You wanna go through the details of the new template proposals and the idea behind this? Then we clarify the dates at the end.
Alright, so for the proposals, for the proposal templates now, as you can see the name, Discord handle, the ambassador or asset affections. Proposal name, you saw type two on the topic. We have two pools, we have the additional research pool and we also have the development pool. So you have to select whatever pool your proposal falls under. Also, you have to give a brief overview, please try to follow the the instruction, which is six hundred characters, normalizes on the characters. So you have to show the potential and the value that your proposal adds to the community. Now also, the relevance to the ambassador program, it needs to be clearly stated in the proposal templates and the relevance of the proposal to the aesthetic ecosystem. That also needs to be clearly stated in the proposal templates. Also, now you need to, the proposal details, the problem that this proposal, this this proposal aims to solve and the solution to this problem. Proposal description, now the milestones, so milestone deliverables. Now, for addition projects, there's gonna be a max allocation for $750 per quarter. And for development projects, it's gonna be a max allocation of 1,000 proposals per quarter. So you have to provide a well-detailed budget breakdown for each milestone. And there needs to be a reporting attached to it. So now for the roadmap and schedule, there needs to be a clear and precise timeline, which highlights the deliverables and the milestones. And monthly reporting, so there needs to be a report at the end of the month presented to the R and D Guild. Now this R and D Guild is, this report is gonna be shared, is gonna be added to the GitHub board first. And it's also gonna be shared with the community through the R and D Guild channel. And also, the report is to, in the end, the version of the report is to be indicated in the, in the report itself. Now for the team. Each proposal is gonna have a team of at least two members. And now it's a must for a co-contributor to be part of the team. Because co-contributors have in-depth knowledge of the ecosystem and the activities of the ambassador program. So each proposal will contain co-contributor as a team member. Now, the voting process, so for voting, there's gonna be the application I said, we're gonna open applications, we're gonna receive proposals. Now after this is done for a week, we're gonna go through a review process whereby we review all the proposals, making sure that they meet the required criterias and the precise timelines. Also, there's gonna be a committee voting. So this is gonna be, this is gonna take place two weeks after the review, where the committee gets to vote on the proposal that they feel is most relevant to the ambassador program. It's gonna be a positive voting, one person, one vote, no downvoting, just you select the proposal of your choice and you vote the proposal. Now this vote is gonna be done by co-contributors. It's gonna be done by the singleite in it, ambassador program co-contributors. So co-contributors are gonna vote and also, there's also gonna be a voting column. So for complex proposals, it's gonna be 60 to 70% of the co-contributors votes. And for general proposals, it's gonna be 30 to 40%. So now, in terms of final deliverables and rewards, now monthly reports should be added, as I said before. It's gonna be added to the GitHub repo for the project. Now there's gonna be a visual presentation upon the completion of each project. So as you guys saw in the last call, there was a presentation from Clement on the research on disabilities and also, there was also a presentation in the ambassador program channel. So this is gonna be done to present deliverables to the community and ensure transparency. And also the reward distribution, so rewards are gonna be sent out post the presentation. So once the presentation is done, rewards will be sent out to the to the, to the development team or the research team. Now, so next quarter planning indicates how the proposal fits into the broader plans of the incoming quarter and consider the project allocation and the project integration. Also, the core team accountability. Now, any core team members that, any core team member that does not deliver on their commitments will not be allowed to work on future proposals, that's a rule going forward. And now, the due criterias and criteria compliance. So in order for us to provide space in the budgets for ideas and new proposals, all proposals currently now are gonna be completed in this quarter. So there's gonna be space for that. And also, this template is gonna be strictly followed to ensure everything is going smoothly. All deliverables are, all deliverables have been provided at the end of the quarter. And proposals should not extend over a period of three quarters for completion. That's one of the new rules that had been set by the R and D Guild. Also, the template is designed to streamline the proposal process for small projects within the singleite ecosystem. Focusing on the efficiency and alignment with the committee goals. So the committee gets to decide what proposal they feel is most necessary to the ambassador program. This is one of the relevant points we took notes. And the template provides a structure framework for submitting proposals, aligning alignment with the singleite ecosystem and goals and providing deliverables. It also allows clear communication, efficient review and stronger development, fostering innovation within the R and D Guild. So this is a quick presentation from the R and D Guild and we hope to get your proposals soon. So thank you guys.
Okay, just a little note for closing this topic. All that we have been trying to do is to, is aim at making us the R and D Guild more deliverable centric, to be more transparent, to have more inclusive participation of the core contributors or community members with proposals and to get involved the community in the voting process. As you can see, we're using all the good practices and experiences of good stuff and our own failures in deep funding or different participation in different programs. And we are trying to make it a fair voting without downvoting and just a positive voting and see how, see how that works out. And to, not to limit, but to establish rules, to standardize the process and to get the community involved in what we built and why we built it. And then to be able to trace results more efficiently, as we have learned in these last two quarters. From again, we are delivering as a guild, three finished proposals or even four. By the end of this quarter, there are gonna be four. So I think all what we're trying to do is to get more efficient and bring more results to the community. Thank you Kissy for all your hard work on this one and for your great presentation. So we're gonna input this new template for submission proposals for the R and D, starting Q4. And we're gonna input this into our Google form so we can trace more efficiently the proposals. Application is gonna be open on August 27th, that's next Tuesday. And be close, let me see, I need to move this. And close on September the 3rd. Then we're gonna have our internal review process from September the 4th to the 10th. And engage the community voting on 11 to the 18th of September. So hopefully, we're gonna have new proposals, creative ideas on the table or have the community to vote on what we build with the budget we receive from the, from the program. So yeah, this is exciting news that we're doing this again to get more deliverable centric and to include the community into this process and to, yeah, you know, we're building for the community. So let's get the community vote. This is a, an idea driven guild, not a members guild or no kind of. We just learned from our mistakes and hopefully we bring good results. Okay, that's it for this first topic. Okay, Vani, sorry to put the spot on you, but I agree, let's keep the treat of the showcase and the results. Oh, you wanna do that, Rojo now?
Yeah, yeah, thankfully I was able to solve it, so yeah.
Okay, so this is what we're gonna do. This is gonna be a milestone for the, for the program and the R and D. Of course, we have been building a lot, but I believe this is a foundational moment. As we are gonna incorporate and integrate all what we have been building into a more complete framework. So Rojo is gonna showcase the world contributors dashboard he have been working for the last two quarters. Rojo, I'm gonna shut up and the floor is all yours. You, you were able to share the screen?
Yeah, I think I am, I'm a co-host. This will stop other screen, yeah, so yeah, I should be able to. First thing I would like to start with before sharing my screen is to say that, well, hopefully you can hear me, can I get a thumbs up or something? Alright, cool, I see you, Tivo.
Yeah, we do.
Nice, nice, so. Thank you. First of all, I would like to say that this is a work in progress, it's not a finished product, which actually you can tell by the technical errors that I just had. So yeah, it's not a finished product, we just wanna show you what it will kind of look like, what functionalities we have now. And I will speak a bit about functionalities that are coming next week, I would say, by the end of next week. This, okay. So where is it? Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Very nice. So as you can see, this is running locally on my machine. The first thing that you're met with when you enter the website, when it's gonna be hosted, is this login screen. It will have a signup page, which we didn't add yet, should be added like tomorrow probably. Sign up plus Discord sign in, signup as well. So we wanted to, initially we were kind of, because a part of our project, we were like, we should do a Web3, which is mainly probably like Ethereum wallet, Cardano wallet sign in. But then we realized a lot of people don't know much about Cardano or Ethereum. Like even though we are in a Web3 community, a lot of people struggle with creating a wallet, figuring out how a wallet works in the first place, making sure that it's secure and, you know, they're not gonna be hacked and their funds are gonna go away. So we said like Discord is quite, you know, common. Most people that come into our community are already familiar with Discord because they are using it. And it's kind of Web3 oriented as well. So we thought like a good idea would be to start with the Discord login, which we will add this week. And then later on, if it is needed, we can go with wallet sign in. But for now, I don't think it's needed. There is a dummy login for now, admin, admin, as you know. And once you log in, this is what you're faced with. Bunch of save your stuff, whatever. So yeah, this is kind of the dashboard. So the dashboard for now is sectioned into two things. So there are members and then there is, and then there is work groups and guilds data. I will start with what we have and then I will talk later on at the end about what we will have. So first thing is members. This thing, you can, you can get some data about members. So for, for example, some things you can see here, for example, I can search for my data. This is the login that I'm, that I'm used. We got a lot of this data from the Treasury Guild's records. We did some cleaning on it and all this kind of thing, we put it in a Postgres database. And yeah, basically you can just, yeah, write whatever person you wanna search here. And then what you will get is where they spend most of their time. In my case, it's the video work group. And how much time was it? So it was 49.8, so basically 45, 50% of my time went into the video work group. Where have they got their most Ajax? Here it says Treasury Guild, but I think it's a data kind of problem, because most of the previous dispatchment of, of, you know, of payments and all these kind of things were like labeled as Treasury Guild. But anyway, most of the USD, as you can see, is from the video work group. And you can see a breakdown of how much time people spent on different work groups and guilds. As you can see, the second one for me is Treasury Guild. I don't know how accurate that is, but R and D Guild, marketing, this kind of stuff. And yeah, you can, you can check out your data. To be honest, at this point, I think we should have a conversation, whether we would like, as a whole ambassador program, whether we would like people to be able to search about all the others? And I think that's the right thing to do since this data should be open. Or do we want it to be like member specific? For example, you enter the dashboard and then you can see your own data, but not necessarily other people's data. Here, as you can see, there is nothing really sensitive, we're not sharing like, you know, anything specific about people. I also decided not to share the actual numbers, but rather share percentages for sensitivity of data, obviously you can share numbers as well. But yeah, you can see here, we can search for Guillermo as well, for example. Just let me pull up his, his ID. So you can write, for example, for Guillermo, Guillermo, let's check out your data. So here for Guillermo, he actually spent 39.7% in the incubation guild. And most of his Ajax is from RD Guild, most USD is from Strategy Guild. This is kind of the breakdown over here. This is for members, so we have another views for work groups. We kind of tried to emulate some of the data breakdown that the Treasury Guild had. And we tried to add more features on it. But for now, I think we have as much features, we will add, we have another view that is different. And we will add more features this week, as I said. So you can choose like a specific date you would like to start from, for example, June 1st and end in the 20th of August. You can choose which kind of subgroup you would like to exclude or include, or just go for all basically. And you will see this kind of breakdown, this is a monthly task and contributors kind of count. Monthly distribution of Ajax and minutes. This is not finished, by the way, there is a lot of edits we're gonna do. I noticed some bugs that we're trying to fix now. And there's other views, you know, for monthly Ajax minutes distribution, wallet distributions and these kind of things. There is one more view that I would like to share. And this view is kind of like a, kind of a general view on the ambassador program. It tells you which, which work group or guild had the most amount of time spent on. In this case, it's the writers' work group, it has the most amount of time spent. And this is how many minutes, perhaps we should style it a bit, I guess, to be more readable. There is Treasury Guild, that is, the one that basically had the most amount of USD and Ajax is the Treasury Guild. Understandably so. And subgroup or basically, you know, the, the, the work group or guild that had the most amount of contributors and that's the ambassador program, that's also understandable. And yeah, it shows you 100 contributors. And you can see here a breakdown of every single work group and guild with their percentages and everything. And this is it. Now for, sorry, for the things that are coming in, I already talked about the login options. One more thing that is coming in is actually view specific that will have more data. So basically for every member, whenever they're gonna sign in, they're gonna see this data about members. They can access this data about members, but they can also access data that is specific to them. For example, the wallet address that they receive their funds in. For example, the, the total amount of Ajax USD and this kind of stuff that they received. And they can, they will be able to see a breakdown of all this data that is very specific to them, that can be seen as sensitive. We will also polish our work group views, graphs and all. And for the rest of the, this is the end of the scope of our project funding. We aim to keep working on it, one thing that we're thinking about is we're gonna talk to the archival work group. And a good thing that, I think we have some members from the archival here. So we're gonna talk to archival to include an archival view from this, from this website, let's say, or from this web app, for people to be able to check the archival data from here. We would like to include documentation of different work groups in here, so that people don't get lost trying to find, trying to find, you know, kind of documentation and this kind of stuff. And yeah, we, we, we basically are trying to, to make like a, like a, like a commonplace where people can find information, where people can investigate, where people can search and this kind of stuff. One more feature we would like to include, and this is up to discussion as well, because we don't know what's sensitive and what's not ultimately. But we would like to include also exports. Some people might wanna run experiments, AI kind of algorithms using this data. Obviously, you know, kind of, I don't know, like wallet data and this kind of stuff might be too sensitive to, to share. But other data, I mean, it's up to discussion, but maybe some community members would like to run some, you know, some experiments, some visualization or any kind of experiments like that. That will be all for the demo for now. Thank you, thank you guys for listening for, and again, if you have any questions or suggestions, I would, I would love to hear them. And sorry for not sharing my camera, just my webcam is not working, sorry for that.
I do have a question about the Ajax and USD. Were all of this input taken from the Excel or from the blockchain? Because in the blockchain, we have actually the correct enough information, where in Excel it's only the imported information.
That is very true. Yeah, this is one of the, one of the discussions we had actually, my teammate and I about this. Because I knew that the, the data that shows in the Excel is actually not the final data. So we have to look at conversion and that conversion or the converted Ajax is ultimately in the export. So now we're working on an algorithm to, to export, to take all of that data from the export automatically and include it in the database, but it's not done yet. That's why I'm saying this data is not accurate, like it's not 100%.
Yeah, I wonder if we should meet in Treasury Automation Workgroup? Because we are also now moving to server side stuff. And there is actually a database structure already for all that data, basically, like there is duplicate. Even though the Excel is at some point master file, but we are moving to this database stuff. So it's easier to integrate different things.
Yeah, it would be cool. Actually, what we can do is like, and this is great that you mentioned it, actually, we should meet about that. Because what we can do is, we don't necessarily have to use your database, but what we can do, we can, we can, because we will have multiple databases. And if we use an external and some internal ones, it will mess up the whole architecture. But what we can do is, we can sync one of the tables in our DB with the table that you, you guys do the, you guys have for the payment. And we can sync those two, if we have the same columns, we can just sync them and then work with, you know, work with it internally, basically, that would be great, actually.
And maybe I should just add that. Yeah, there's a lot of room for you wanna add something else, Tivo?
I just thought like maybe mentioning in the message, in the Zoom chat, I shared a bit about this Treasury Guild, why it pops up as heavily is because before 2024, we did like percentual payments to every ambassador members and we had like a different style of distributing rewards. And so yet, the main dashboard you have, you probably would need some kind of time limitations or at least start time of 2024, where we had this cumulative and all the, like the, like a new format of managing treasury introduced.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I understood as well, because I think before 2024, also the tag system wasn't very efficient. Like there were like a couple, I think there was just ambassador program and there was Treasury Guild. Others, not as much. So yeah, it makes a lot of sense, maybe, that's a good idea, maybe we should start at 2024. That's already what, eight months of data, that's not bad, to be honest.
Yeah, agree, and also use, as you mentioned, a filtering system. We can put that on the filter, you can select the year and we can start with a, oh, we can use all data and you can filter through the years or through the months.
Yeah, we can use filtering for, for the other views as well, yeah, sure.
And again, great stuff, I was very excited when Rojo showcased this. Personally, I have been interacting with a Treasury app for the last months and learning about it. And of course, all Tivo's insights are, are correct. And but there's a lot of room for collaboration and integration. And also the legacy project that Kenichi is bringing. And also the skills database is gonna be integrating with this, to have everything in one place, as Rojo mentioned. We can play a lot, but also following us, Vani mentioned, safety issues, your private, so great stuff and let's keep working on it. Then the other update in regards of Rojo's participation on the R and D is gonna come probably next week on the social media dashboard. We are buying some, we're just approved some budget to buy some licensing. And we're gonna have an open source tool for all guilds and members to use without profile limitation. Uh, and we're gonna have a, an open source tool for all guilds and members to use without, uh, profile limitations. So that is coming next week. Rojo, you wanna give a, a short, uh, summary on the status of what we just, uh, went through? For the community to have an expectation.
Uh, can you say it again?
Can you give us a, a short summary on the update on that regard of the social media dashboard? So the community have a, an expectation of when are we?
Yeah, yeah, hundred percent.
Gonna showcase and what?
So yeah, we received today, we received today the, the dispatchment of the, of the, of the, um, of the social media dashboard that we were working on. Uh, ultimately, there was a report that was made. I, I think you guys will have more data by the end of the quarter. But, uh, for now, uh, we decided to hold the development and move on to use an open source project that is already out there. It's called MixPost. So mix like mixing and post like posting. Uh, yeah, you can, you guys can Google it. It's a, it's an open, it's an open source project for social media management. Uh, it's basically an alternative for tools like Buffer and like Metrical and Hootspot and this kind of, uh, tools. Uh, basically, what we will do is we will acquire a license, uh, for them, which I will work on tomorrow, probably. Um, once the license is there, uh, I'll work on the, the whole thing. Uh, once the hosting obviously as well is there, then, um, a login and, uh, you know, login info and all this kind of stuff will be provided for the members. Mainly from the video work group and writers' work group. We will also reach out in the next town hall. If it's ready by the next town hall, uh, I will come as well in the next town hall to, to reach out to whomever is kind of already doing some reach out work, uh, in social media and this kind of stuff. Um, yeah, we will, we will do some educational sessions on, on the program, how to use it and this kind of stuff. Those will be done in the video work group and in the writers' work group. We will record them and share them privately on YouTube. So it's not gonna be public, because I don't think it's relevant for public use. Uh, but you know, like, uh, we're gonna share the link on, on the channel, uh, on the different channels. Uh, uh, one other thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna be, uh, doing basically some IT work for different work groups that are using it. So maintenance, updates and all this kind of stuff. Again, all what I can say now is, uh, if you're interested in using it, uh, and if you're not in the video work group and the writers' work group, please reach out. Let us know. Uh, I don't know which other work groups are really actively using social media, whether it's X or YouTube or others. Uh, I think TiVo, you're using YouTube, right?
Yes, and then I might have to start using Twitter, but not Instagram. So if it helps to cross platform and cross network communication, then maybe, see you soon.
For sure, yeah. It, it does have, uh, support for X, for, you know, like, uh, Instagram, this kind of stuff, YouTube, this kind of stuff. Uh, we will have a limit on, on uploads, uh, from YouTube, uh, because the YouTube API does not allow like very long uploads. So some of the meetings, like these meetings, will still be probably uploaded manually. But some of the shorter videos, like five minutes videos and this kind of stuff will be automated. Uh, I checked out other tools. They, they have the same kind of limits. They have like one gigs, 500 megabytes limit on, on uploads. Uh, so yeah. Uh, but again, this is a reach out. If you, if you're, if you're interested in using it, uh, obviously you have to be kind of, I don't know, like involved in a work group or something that is using it, but yeah. Thank you, guys. If anyone has a question, please.
Oh, yeah, uh, thank you, Rojo. Yeah, then we'll give an update on it. Uh, we will invite you again next week when, when you have something to showcase. But great stuff. Of course, uh, Latam, uh, will use this tool, uh, as we are, uh, driven through media. And yeah, metrics are always good. But hey, so we're almost on the 45 minutes on it. Um, so the other one, uh, topic, the last on the agenda, uh, probably is the more relevant for us, uh, here. And then later we will share on the channels. Uh, we work on some infographics and some detailed, uh, data to follow. But it is the Q3 reports and Q4 budget submission. So, uh, Vani, uh, you wanna jump in? It's your turn to show.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's not long before quarter three reports and quarter four budgets are needed. And it may be a little bit sooner than you think. Um, I'm just posting in the chat a context setting document and I'll briefly screen share it. We've been working on this just so that people know what the schedule is. So yeah, it explains for maybe for newer, um, core contributors, kind of what we're deciding on and who's eligible to be involved and how it works. But then down here under how does the process work, we've got a schedule. It is quite tight. But I think we looked at how it worked last time and we've tried to give a little bit more time where people felt there was pressure and a little bit less time where people felt that things could have gone a bit quicker. But basically, we're aiming to get, um, the quarter four budgets and the quarter three quarterly reports in from everybody on the 9th of September. And we're aiming to get the decisions made and everything ratified and everything sorted and consented to by the 26th of September. Um, that is slightly before the beginning of the quarter, but it gives work groups a little bit of time to adjust to things like, um, whatever budget fitting might be needed and to kind of tweak things accordingly. We've had a little bit of thinking also about what's a valid reason for objecting. And obviously, you can object to a work group's proposed budget for any reason you please. Oh, look, rogue full stop. Let me lose that. There we go. Um, you know, it's whatever you think, but we're just trying to say that you don't have to agree completely with everything in a budget in order to, to consent to it. You just have to believe that it's safe to try it. So we're kind of saying, yeah, avoid nitpicking little details of a work group's budget and just ask yourself, would it do harm to the program to approve this? If it would, then you can withhold consent, but if it really wouldn't, then you can consent safely. So yeah, there's stuff to read in there about how the process works. But the main thing that we wanted to bring up today is in the governance meeting a few hours ago, we said, well, what happens if somebody doesn't put a budget and a quarterly report in, in time for the ninth? And we were, you know, we kind of went around it. Should there be a grace period, blah, blah, blah? And in the end, we came down on the idea that a deadline is a deadline. And if people don't, um, if a work group doesn't, we kind of came up with the idea that maybe they should just get, um, a, a kind of minimal budget, which would be based on whatever their operational budget. You know, the elements that were for things like running meetings, documenting, facilitating, those operational things that they had for Q3. And we base a budget on, on that and just, they would just get that. May, maybe that sounds a bit shocking. I don't know. The idea that if somebody misses a deadline, they don't get a chance to put in a proper budget and they just work on a, a minimal operational budget for quarter four. So we kind of need people's thoughts on this and, you know, buy in. And if people turn around and go, that's outrageous, you can't do that, then I guess we can't. But in that case, what's the meaning of the deadline? So we have like 10 minutes left and it'd be really good to hear from people. But the other thing that we just wanna do is want to mention is that Guillermo is creating a kind of da-da sort of red letters infographic to encourage people and remind people to put their budgets in. And we're gonna keep posting that until we get them. So we're not, I think what came out of the retrospective last time is that there wasn't enough publicity. And, you know, sometimes people didn't even know they were a core contributor. People didn't necessarily know that they needed consent. They didn't know what the dates were to put stuff in. So we're gonna try and make sure that is not the case this time. Yeah, any thoughts on this idea of keeping to the deadline?
Well, I had a little experience with it earlier and you guys did a great job with that, seeing some of it that I saw. And I think that's a great idea that what deadline is a deadline. I, I, I agree too, that I think deadlines can be abused if you give too much leeway on them. So it's really cut and dry and I kind of like that.
I have no issue with deadlines, but I do wonder about this nitpicking part. Is it possible that, that the first round, there is that kind of detail oriented? Like, because I do feel that sometimes like the formatting and the way that people are sharing their proposal could be slightly better, even though it doesn't do harm, but would be made easier to read. Because I'm, on one side, when I read other people's proposals, I'm not reading them about studios should be funded. But I'm doing it so that if I take this proposal and take it to another community and share, this is what we do. It, and if it's not like, not up to that part, I'm not gonna do that. But if, if we could somehow, you know, collaborate and share, hey, this is a better format to share these things, even though it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, I totally see your point. And I think, you know, maybe that is something that is not part of the consent process. Maybe that is some, I, I don't know. It feels like it shouldn't be a reason to not consent to a budget. But it's reminded me that I completely forgot to mention another thing that has been ideated on in governance sessions. The idea is that the very, the very first form is just gonna be a list of all the work groups. And do you consent or do you object or do you abstain? And it just means that people are not confronted with 16 separate forms, which we have the feeling has put people off a little bit and has made it feel overwhelming. So the first time, if you consent, you can just tick it and then that work group goes through. And you only then, in the next round, have to look at specific forms for the work groups that are outstanding. Last time, there was about eight of them. I think it was eight went through and eight didn't in the first round. And we just feel that people did seem to find it a bit overwhelming to have that many forms at first. And to just have eight rather than 16 might encourage participation. So that's the approach we wanna try. And if people sort of think, oh, God, no, then say no.
And when one change there is going to be, like last Treasury Guild, I shared that we move into single forum instead of having multiple forums. But in the end, it's like the same thing. You just submit the same form as many times as there are workers. And it does a bit help to narrow it down what you just mentioned.
Yeah, and a little little note of that, what we also discussed in the last governance course, on this regard, is that probably we all have learned from last experience. The last quarter, we did went through consents, a lot of meetings, and still we reached the deadline. Uh, and it was a good improvement from previous. So how we present proposals, how we address concerns. So I, I guess we won't go through the same mistakes. Um, and that will just should be more fast. Sorry for my, we faster descent. Uh, and still, there's a lot of room for improvement. From templates, formats, format this to help, uh, process. And the other thing we, we did discuss, uh, TiVo, the last week is, uh, give a chance to education, also in engaging on participation before making it mandatory, or at least for leads of work groups and guilds. Because, um, there was a lack of engaging on the second, third iteration. And, and we did some other infographics, not with red fonts, but just in other colors, to using some kind of motivational things, you know, because sometimes on this course and all these channels, all the messages go, it mixed so fast. So having infographic using this quotes to participate and how important it is to shape this, like participating in this consent. Um, but yeah, that's what we, we have been discussing, you know, educating the community to, to participate on this. To help on the process and to, yeah. Again, hopefully we have learned from the last, uh, last quarter experience. That we have to say was, was, was a good one. Uh, the whole process cleaned itself, but we already discussed this in the, on the retrospective. Uh, all the guilds and work groups, they have to go through their own process, discuss internally, uh, you know, without killing each other. And we did achieve, go putting some budgets down, uh, going through stuff, bring more transparency. Uh, at least it was the case in some work groups and guilds that I, that I'm part of. Vani, yeah.
Yeah, just to add that Peter did a little bit of research with core contributors last time, who didn't take part in the consent process at all. And just asked them why not via DM. And we got quite a few replies actually. And the most common reason was, I didn't even know this was going on. So even though we did message people in a, in the channel calls, decision to be made, which they are part of. Sometimes people don't, don't look if they get a Discord alert. They don't. So what we're gonna do this time is DM people, um, to say, you know, with the first form at least and get them involved. But if anybody's got any other ideas on how best to encourage people to get involved, then please come along to, um, a governance work group or an open governance session and share those ideas. I mean, I know that a few people have said, oh, yeah, I'm up for, you know, essay. You mentioned that you're up for getting that message out there. But yeah, as Guillermo says, governance should be done by the people who are most engaged. And that's the core contributors. So let's try and make sure that they do this time.
Yeah, and before we close, so we, we agree that we will do on any, all of the iterations. After the first phase, we will do again infographic and a shout out. So we will reinforce the message. Um, and probably there's a lot of different options. Uh, what we want to avoid or we agree on governance calls is that we shouldn't pay people for voting. We need to avoid making it mandatory and we need to avoid to incentivize through token disposition. That's, that's a whole different thing. Um, so Rojo, you wanna add something?
Yeah, I, I have two questions, actually. The first question is, uh, Vani mentioned, uh, like, uh, people who are, uh, nitpicking. And I, I was actually wondering like, uh, how do we differentiate between, uh, nitpick and obviously I didn't read the document yet, so maybe it's mentioned there, but how do we differentiate between nitpicking and like a valid, you know, critique? Uh, the second question would be, uh, are the forums anonymized?
Yeah, Vani, probably you wanna go on that one.
Hey, I mean, how we distinguish between a subjective thing and another subjective thing is obviously subjectively. So all we've done is we've kind of tried to say to people, yeah, just have a think before you put in 25 tiny points in one Google form that really don't make the budget unsafe to try, but are just detail. Just have a think before you do that. That's all we're saying. And hopefully, you know, some people probably will do things that other people think are nitpicking. But, you know, we're not trying to police what people consent to and don't consent to. We're just trying to say, a consent process is supposed to be about, does this do harm? Is this gonna, is this not even safe to try? Because in the end, in a decentralized community, each work group has its own priorities and its own ideas of what's important to it. I might not agree, but I'm not gonna like vote down their budget because of it. It's more like, well, you go ahead and you do your thing. But if I can see an actual danger to the ambassador program, then I'm gonna object. As for what, what was the second question? Was anonymity? Yes, they are. But obviously, um, people who can access the, um, Ambassador's Google account can see who did it, but we don't share. Um, the details of who said what, so that people feel a little bit freer maybe to say things that they wouldn't necessarily want to. I don't know, not stuff they wouldn't wanna put their name to, but just maybe if the sensitivities, like, you know, if you vote, if you wanna vote down the budget of somebody who's a mate of yours, because you just don't think it's the right thing, you can.
Uh, so how is the data accessed from the forums? So how is, uh, what is the export kind of, uh, process?
Currently, it's in the ambassador account, the, the Google Drive and yeah, basically. And yeah, basically CSV files. However, the last iterations where each proposal had its own form. So that I had to create a CSV file for each forum. So now with this iteration, there's going to be one forum. And I'm just gonna make a different parcel to, right, extracted. The Power BI dashboards that I created there, I anonymized, anonymized that information because we have agreed that we will actually put also that. All on chain, or at least that people made the decision. Um, and yeah, I, I raised that topic in the September first Treasury Call to, uh, on that.
Yeah, I, I want to add a little bit on it. Um, so it's obvious that. Guilds and proposals need to survive nitpicking, uh, different criteria. What we did last time that we probably need to improve on this one is to, um, um, consensus meeting, go straight to the point. Um, probably we, we get lost sometimes in rhetoric and narrative or why this is good or bad. Just concrete, you know, this is the concern, you address it simple and that way we'll move faster. And again, I believe we, we want to have as much as, uh, concerns. Because we, we are learning by building this process. Um, DC, uh, you have your hand up. You want to add something on this?
Yeah. So, um, earlier Vanny was speaking, so, um. Initially in the governor's call, I, I, we are having the discussion though. So I just wanted to, uh, speak on it. So for, for instance, um, someone does not present the proposal, uh, on time, not, not send anyone will, but. That is a possible scenario. And if, if that happens, uh, I think the solution that was made here was, um. It should be given, um, the operational cost or operational allocation to work with, with the terms of documentation and, um, facilitation. So I was, there was, there was a suggestion in the governor's code that actually felt quite adequate to me. So, um, why don't we give them a portion of the previous budget rather than. Cutting or rather than giving them just the operational allocations, because some work groups like, um. The media work group, the videos, the writers focus more on creative content. And if we're going to give them an allocation for just operations, are we going to say that they're not going to create contents within that whole quarter? Because they submitted the budget late. So I'm just saying, just a suggestion. So why, why don't we just give them, um, a fraction of their previous, um, budget allocation? It might differ from work to work, but I'm just giving a suggestion here.
Okay, Kissa, good one. Yeah, I think we should address this in the right place, all in treasury. Uh, or in governance, starting, uh, this Thursday. Um, so take an order on that on a side and we will, or, or also discuss it on the channels. So we have a recollection of this. Uh, idea. Um, but again. Uh, we are learning process, uh, we experiment, but when we get to something, we need to shape it. Not change it from, from scratch. So we have something that, uh, TiVo and everyone participating on treasury have designed. It's working. We just need to make it work better and faster and more efficiently. Um, and also we're going to have a market, uh, price limitations. Uh, so we need to be more responsible. And, uh, with everyone's time and, I don't know, I'm sure everyone have their own experience over the last process. Personally, I did enjoy it and I, I think the process, uh, we have designed and treasury pushing is working. So. Um, we can agree or disagree on that, but, um. Uh, we, we have achieved a deadline. So let's try to do it this time again. Um, on my side, um, I'm going to need to jump off all in five minutes. I need to pick up my kit. It was great, uh, to have us all, all players coming back like Rojo. Uh, TiVo, it's good to have you back after your holidays, well, still on your holidays. Good to see you made again and, um. So, um, if anyone have something else to address before we close this or open topics.
William in the chat asks a bunch of questions regarding like quorum and, uh. Um, I don't know what was our core contributors. Um, well, before we are gonna do this, um. Process again, so I guess on eight September or week before, I don't know, let's see when do I find time, we'll update the core contributor list. This will again kind of shake up things. Um, we have learned from the last iteration that we notify now if people are getting dropped in. Or dropped out, um, from the list and. And regarding the quorum, I don't remember exact numbers, but I think we did establish something or maybe in this quarter board. Document that was shared, there is something about it. Where initially it's consent process, but there is at the, at the end, if still. We have issues or maybe one or two members out of all the other voters. And kind of disagree, there is still a chance that the proposal will go through. But yeah, I think most of this will all be ratified at the beginning of September. Exactly. Then I, I will be back, I will, yeah, jump through all the governance work, catch up with everybody and then. Get it rolling.
Okay, okay, William, you want, you want to follow up?
I'm going to read the question. To anyone who would like to answer this query. Has a quorum number been established for the core contributors for the voting process? How many core contributors must participate in order for the project to be considered accepted in a democratic fashion? This will have to be determined through a percentage system number of core contributors will change over time. The changes that are taking place, have the core contributors voted on these changes? And once the changes are implemented, will they be reflected in the Discord charter? As this directly affects the previous responsibilities of the treasury. Again, are the changes being made in regards to the budget process going to evoke by the core contributors? The changes being proposed here today will change the historical operation of this community. The people within the community should be educated how the decisions are being made. And that there is a democratic process established within the community, perhaps in the newsletter. That was, that's it.
Yeah, thank you, William. Well, I guess, I don't know, on my side, um. This is exactly what we're doing. People are being communicated on the Discord channel for, for all the process. Uh, and we are trying to motivate, uh, engagement in the decision making. Um, as we are all designing, um, the system, we are governing, it's self-governance.
When I answered the question, um, I did miss the charter stuff. Yeah, usually after we have clear understanding of which groups or proposals get forwarded. We ask if they need a channel or create a channel, change it. So all of the Discord stuff will also be. Reflected if you, by charter, you mean the channels themselves.
No, in the charter, I'm referring to, uh. Something that was, I was constantly reminded of, uh, before I took my break. That there is a charter here that determines the operations of this discord. Is there no such trouble?
Not quite touch. I don't understand what you mean. Maybe that is.
Do you know what a charter is, TiVo?
Actually, no. Okay, let me go there.
Do you know what a charter is, TiVo?
Um, don't think so then.
Okay, check, check it out and it'll give you basically. It's a light form of a constitution. It is the goals of the community. To, uh, grow, uh, do no harm, as Vanessa, Vanessa said. Uh, and do so in a coherent fashion. And generally, part of that charter. In a modern society, should have democracy as part of it. And if we have a democracy and the decisions are being made by the core contributors. Then we should definitely be getting the core contributors engaged. And if they're not being engaged and the process is being fouled. Then that should be recognized with an, a newsletter. So the community knows that. What the way this system is working for them. That's basically what a charter does.
Yeah, I was just confused. What does the discords are for me?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this might be something that's just called something else, but I do think it's worth saying that, you know, things like a newsletter presuppose. An active group of people who make decisions who then communicate it to other people who are not engaged. In this community, everybody who has had a reasonable amount of time, like being involved is engaged. Anyone can come to meetings of the various groups where decisions are made. And if they can't make it, they can engage asynchronously in the discord. So there isn't really. A group who would be communicating to another group. Which is what I think something like a newsletter would do. And also, you know, the decision-making process that we're using is not voting. It's cons, it's a consent process, which is kind of different. So I guess maybe, you know, you're talking quite a lot about voting and, you know, saying that core contributors should, should vote on things. You raise a really interesting and important point about quarums and it's been raised a few times, like what should the quorum be? And I don't think we've reached a conclusion because the difficulty is that you can't, well, I don't believe anyway. I don't know what. I know a few people think we should make it compulsory to vote, but I think that would be really counterproductive and you can't really make. A consent process compulsory. So. It really feels like we can't force people and it would be counterproductive to force people. So what do you do? If people are raising important objections or important issues, but there's only two of them or there's only three of them or whatever. Um, do you go, oh, that's not valid because it's not a quorum? I don't think we can do that. So. At least in the early stages, even one objection needs to be discussed and thought about. What we do have though is, um, in the third iteration, we go for 80%. And we've had that in place for a little while now, I think. That if 80% of those who bother to engage with the process say it's okay. Um, a particular work group's budget, then it's okay. That doesn't answer everything you've asked, but it's some of it anyway.
Well, no, that's a, it's a part of it. And so the last part, though, the 80%, that's written in this charter.
This is the thing, Billy, that I don't, I don't know what this charter is. I don't think we have that. I don't think.
Well, during, during the, uh, the period of time I was trying to, uh. Open the door again at the Strategy Guild. I was constantly being referred to information within the charter. That determines the rules of what goes on in guilds. And if there isn't a charter. Then the community should have a charter established. And I think if the R and D. Were to accept the challenge of that scale, I know it would take a lot of their time, but. They should perhaps be the ones who create the charter. Because they're the ones who are going to be the, the biggest growers within the community. So they need the community to all work together towards the research and development. That they put forward sort of idea. I'm, I'm just putting this out there because we do not have a, uh, a basic charter of rights. If we don't have that, then I'm not sure that's, that's the way it should be going. I'm just saying about the entire community. You guys can vote on it, the core contributors, that's just my two cents, guys. Um, thank you. The, the developments really do sound great. I, I didn't know if, uh, TiVo was surprised at all today with the moves being done with the treasury, but. You guys seem to have all worked that stuff out. So that's great. I'm, I'm more focused on about something encompassing our, our community. And in regards to the newsletter, the newsletter wouldn't be going from one group to another. It would be going. From our community out to the rest of the community. So as there's no one group against another, it's, it's the whole community coming out of the newsletter. So I mean, that, that should be sort of promoted. And gives other people that aren't as engaged an opportunity to be engaged in this process. Anyways, that's my two cents, guys. It's an ambassador meeting, so I just thought I'd throw that in there. I know I'm not ambassador. I know I'm not a core contributor. But I, I think there's tons of possibilities still in this community and I just want to see it achieved. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, William. We will address that. I, I'm taking notes. I need to do some research, uh, but whatever. Make us better, we will try it. And so good to see you again. Um, I'm, I'm gonna jump off fast. Sorry, I apologize myself. Vanny, you're in charge. Uh, I need to pick up my kit. Look, they're gonna close it in him and at school and he's gonna hate me. Uh, again, great to see you guys. See you guys later.
See you later. Yeah, I think people are hopping off as we speak and we're well over time. So thanks. Thank you, Billy, for raising those issues and. Yeah, they can be further discussed in a, another town hall or in other governance meetings. But yeah. Um. I think we just need to wrap it up and say goodnight unless anybody's got anything that they would like to raise. Oh, I'm seeing something in the chat. It's just a good night. All right. Okay, well, good night, everybody. I'm gonna hit, I'm gonna hit the red button and end meeting for all. Good night, everyone.